Regular school board meeting for Monday, July 13th, 2020 to order. And I will note that during this public health emergency, we are strongly encouraging members of the public to attend school board meetings remotely. We also have a number of our board members who are meeting with us remotely. So we will move into the meeting opening and roll call and verification of the forum.
Ms. Baker? Ms. Baker? Trish? She was just here.
Sorry, here.
Okay, great. Mr. Pope?
Here.
Mr. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Fang? Ms. Fang?
Here, sir.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rano?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
All present.
I will note that we, as board members, are testing out various equipments of masks. We are also socially distanced. But we are concerned about sound quality as to whether board members and/or members of the public can hear us. So please, if you're having a hard time hearing us, we need you to let us know that because we have to make sure that people can hear what we're saying. So if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will move into item 4A, which are public comments. And at our March 19th meeting, the board passed a motion to suspend public participation at board meetings. We provided an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments with emails. And if you guys will give me a little bit of time, I need to pull up, oh, Heidi's bringing over the email comments. So I'm going to read the email comments that we have received. And I'm reading them in...
There's two per page there.
In order. So we have an email from Greg Wright. He is commenting with respect to 12B. "I first taught nearly 20 years ago. The petition requests you received were common practices back then at any school valuing all students. Your response should be established policies, investments, and trainings that show this work in motion. If it isn't that easy, we are decades behind. Please get started." Greg Wright, Spash class of 1998, Masters in Education from Stanford, 2006. We have a public comment from Representative Katrina Shankland. "I'm writing in support of the school board, acting to support our students of color in advanced racial equity and inclusion in our district. This includes providing a forum at meetings to address these issues proactively and ensuring students' ideas are listened to as their lived experiences inform their perspectives." Katrina Shankland, State Representative, 71st Assembly District. We have a public comment from Janice Salvinsky. "You have irreparably harmed countless students and alum. Spash is racist, homophobic, and misogynistic. Every person I knew in high school has a story recounting these themes. Teachers targeting POC and LGBTQIA students directly or passively by simply ignoring the struggles they faced from other students. I'm sure you expect us to be grateful for allowing us on your agenda, but thank God your 50-word restriction doesn't allow us to truly express how awful our experiences were and how detailed our stories are." We have a public comment from, and I apologize, the last several were related to our item 12B. I neglected to indicate that. We have an email comment from Kristi Sublanka, again, related to item 12B. "Good afternoon. Thank you for discussing equity and inclusion. I am impressed by the students who put together the petition. I'd like the school board to create a committee with representatives from marginalized populations to discuss this topic on a monthly basis and take action to improve our schools and our community." This email included a quote, "The good we secure for ourselves is precarious and uncertain until it is secured for all of us and incorporated into our common life." And that is Jane Adams. We have a public comment from Nina Heckmat, referencing 12B. "Spash is an institution in which microaggressions and other forms of racism and prejudice are permitted to fester. We demand curricular reform that educates students about Black history and systemic racism, e.g., redlining, prison gerrymandering, healthcare disparities. Anything less than an inclusive, anti-racist learning environment for BIPOC students is unacceptable." We have a public comment from Lauren Gantz, related to 12B. "Dear members of the Stevens Point School Board, I write to support of the bans outlined in the Justice for Spash Students of Color petition. As a member of UWSP faculty, I've taught many Spash alumni who speak to the hostile climate for BIPOC at that school and to the administration's inaction on the problem. Change is necessary." I have a public comment from Sarah Kim, referring to item 12B. "My time at Spash resulted in racial trauma and questions about my value as a person of color. The worst of my experiences came from white folk who were apathetic and impatient. Now more than ever, board members need to listen and empathize without playing devil's advocate or being skeptical." I have a public comment from Alexander Eaton, again, referencing 12B. "I cannot express my anger and concern in 50 words. The S.P.A.S.D. may be smaller than Madison, but the need to protect students of color is equally important. I am a rising senior, and I deserve to have my safety and well-being in mind. Get cops out of our schools." And there is a quote, "Stand up for what you believe in, even if it means standing alone." I have a comment from Annalise Bablich, referencing item 12B. "I graduated from Spash last year. I witnessed many teachers ignore harmful and racist comments and actions made by students. If the school doesn't take immediate action, more students will be traumatized by racial gaslighting and violence occurring in schools, which will affect many students in the long run." I have a comment from Shannon LaFrenier with respect to item 12B. And it reads, "I request a sexual harassment/assault policy that identical in all school handbooks, including elementary. I request a procedure to be developed for student self-reporting during the school day, including the student can choose to not return to their regular schedule. An adult of the same sex will be included in any interviews, and a parent guardian will be present at any interviews after the initial report." So those comments were all referencing item 12B of our agenda. I also have comments with respect to, this one is from Patrick Meyer, and it is referencing 12A. "School reopening update. A reopening plan that includes a blended model for PK to 6 is most in line with current guidance and should be considered." And I have a comment with respect to 12A from Shannon LaFrenier. "I request that all classes be in e-learning format for at least the first semester of the 2021 school year, excuse me, 2020-2021 school year. I am very concerned about the equity and equality of education within the district if we have some students in classrooms and some in e-learning situations." And I have a comment from Patrick Lawrence, referencing 12A. "If health/safety and the community's need for childcare are priorities, mandatory mask wearing by students and staff is necessary. Follow the science and lessons learned in countries that are beating COVID. Please protect vulnerable teachers and staff. Protect our community from further virus spread." Those were the public comments that were received this evening, in accordance with the policy. We will move into item 5, Presentations. A is the Communications Director Report. Sarah O'Donnell.
Hi, thank you very much. A few things I want to touch on tonight. We continue to share information sort of across all channels as we go. I want to specifically thank those who have taken the time to provide feedback. I know it's frustrating, I think, to be in a situation where it's difficult to have that dialogue right now, face-to-face. If we were under different circumstances, right, our playbook would suggest that we hold open forums, that we invite people in, that we have these conversations. And right now, we're just not at a place where we can do that. So I just want to thank and encourage those who have been doing that. We are keeping a repository of that information to represent it as decisions continue to be made. To that end, we will be surveying again, either in late July or early August, likely reflective of, you know, whatever decisions cabinet makes in the next several weeks to then see, I shouldn't say decisions, kind of some options as we continue to sort through which of the three frameworks that were presented, which we are considering coming back at, or what it might look like. We obviously want feedback, again, from staff and from parents before any of those decisions would be, you know, officially kind of made. So please keep an eye out for that. Additionally, we did have an opportunity to present with the Portage County Business Council. Corey, Craig, and Meg were able to be kind of socially-distanced presenters for that. They shared a copy of the reopening plan that the board had seen back at the end of June, trying to, again, just get that information out about where we currently are as a district and what employers might be able to expect moving forward. We had 122 participants. Most stayed for the entire hour, which was really great to see. And we have begun seeing if there's a way that we might be able to replicate that format for our own staff and parents moving forward. So take a watch for that. We do have diploma distribution scheduled to take place this Wednesday and Thursday for both Spash and CFC. We will be keeping the official kind of folks at that space down and keeping everyone socially distanced and then really reinforcing kind of the guidelines that Spash and CFC had laid out to keep students moving through. Big part of that, the, it sounds like I have, or, big part of that will be, we will have a videographer there. We will be reading students' names, and we'll be creating that video that's got those other components of the graduation that we will not be able to do in person this year. Finally, I just want to mention, we are finding that there's so much information out there that I think folks are having a hard time kind of digesting all of it, right? There's a lot to absorb, and we know that written communication is not always how everyone learns or how everyone can accept information. So last week, you may have seen, and we're going to share with you when I'm done talking, the reopening of schools, summer school kind of update intro. And our plan is to, once a week, put together very short videos that can kind of assist answering questions and then redirect people back to information on the website where they can find that. Even though it's there and we're seeing high percentage of downloads on those documents, we're still getting some questions from folks that we want to make sure we're answering. So today, Craig and Beth both reported segments, so we'll continue to release that information. Our intent is to do one per week, although you might not always see them. Some might be more geared toward parents and some might be more geared toward staff. So definitely keep an eye out for those. We think they'll be effective. Certainly feel that last week's was effective in at least sharing kind of what that would look like, what those procedures would be leading into today. Well, Heidi, I don't know, you have the link. I'll mute myself.
... session two and are excited to have your students join us. Today, we'd like to show you a few new procedures we've put in place to keep your children safe.
When your student arrives at school, they will look for their teacher's symbol and color. They will then line up on socially-distanced dots and wait for the remainder of their class to arrive. When everybody has arrived, they will then enter the building through one of the designated entrances. Each building will have specific designated entrances and exits to maintain social distancing. As students enter the building, they will be asked to sanitize their hands at one of the hand sanitizing stations. From there, they will then walk in a socially-distanced line to their classroom. A good way for students to check if they are far enough apart is to extend their arms and make sure that they cannot touch anyone around them. Depending on your student's classroom, they will either be separated six feet apart via tables or with dividers on tables to make sure that safe social distancing occurs in the classroom. Students will also find their materials underneath their desk or table in a bag or container to make sure that supplies are specific to that individual student and not be in touch by multiple students. Adults in the building who are working directly with students will be wearing either face shields or face masks. In order to maintain a safe school environment, breakfast and lunches will be delivered to each classroom, where students will then eat at their table. Only the bottle-filling option will be available at our water fountains. We encourage students to bring a water bottle to school with their name on it to use during the day. Disposable cups will be available for students who do not have a water bottle. Classroom play equipment will be sanitized before and after each use. At the end of the day, students will be escorted out to their bus line, where they will stand at their socially-distanced bus dot. Socially-distanced dots will also be located in the parent pickup and drop-off areas.
As students enter the bus, we'll have them walk to the furthest seat available in the back, sitting one per seat, unless they're siblings, and then they can sit together. Students will sit near the window to maintain six feet of distance across the aisle. Thank you so much for sharing this information with your children before they come back to visit us for summer school. We're excited for a great three weeks of traditional classroom learning. For more information on what the district is doing to keep your children safe, please visit us at our website. Have a great summer.
Do board members have any questions for Sarah? Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
We will move into item B, which is our Superintendent's Report. Craig Gerlock.
Thank you. I'd like to start by introducing Stacy Heneman. If you could stand up, Stacy, and if you could step forward a little bit so the camera can get on you a little bit. There we go. Stacy came from Sun Prairie. She is our newest social studies teacher at Spash. And because she made the trip, I wanted to at least introduce her and have her say a few words, please.
Hi, it's nice to meet you. I'm really excited to be a part of Spash. I'm teaching AP Psychology and US History. I've been teaching for 10 years, AP Psych for eight of those, and this last year I was an AP Reader, so I'm super excited to really be dedicating that. I'm also working on my Masters toward Psychology, so it's definitely a passion. And I haven't taught US History in a couple of years, but it's also one of my favorites, and I'm really excited to work with your team and teach it by theme and see what they've done. It sounds like I'm just pumped to be part of Spash and part of your school district. So thank you very much for having me here, even though I probably shouldn't have been due to COVID. Sorry about that. But thank you very much for your hospitality and for letting me speak.
Thank you so much. And welcome.
Welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Welcome to the plane, Stacy.
Thank you.
Bliss reopening, we had, we reopened our district office at the beginning of last week. During the course of the summer, we were probably working at the capacity of about 10% staff. The rest of the staff was working at home. Several of us were working here during that time. Heidi, of course, worked here every day, and the rest of us would kind of, would come and go. But we're all back right now. We have, we have additional safety precautions in place, just like we do the buildings. We have plexiglass appropriately placed in offices for clerical staff as well as other members of Bliss. And we are generally in positions where we are able to social distance. However, when we are unable to do that, we also wear our protective masks and/or shields. We do have somewhat of a pipe funneling into our HR office that we're working on trying to reduce the number of people that are working within that very small corridor. So at least for the rest of the summer, we're able to use our PD room, and we have some vacant offices of staff that aren't here right now. So we're able to make some adjustments for the short term, but we're going to have to take a look at how that works as we move forward. HR tends to be very busy, and there's a number of people in there. And then our, our Student Services Office will start to get a tremendous amount of traffic with, with parents and families coming in to register. So things are actually going okay here. In terms of Bliss and Heidi, Heidi is going to be leading us. She's taking on a new role with...
WISCAP.
WISCAP, which is the...
Statewide Trade Association for Community Action Agencies.
Thank you. She's going back to work in community action, which she spent a great part of her career doing. So I want to say thank you to Heidi and for the short time that you were here and wish you the best of luck as you move on.
Thank you. We're all going to miss you very much and very grateful for keeping all of this together during the period of your time here with the district. We've had many, many additional, really crisis management situations culminating with COVID, of course. And you've just done a wonderful job of keeping all the regular stuff together as well as helping to support the, those things that pop up every single day, so.
Thank you. It's been a true pleasure working with all of you on the school board.
You'll truly be missed, Heidi.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
Truly.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I was supposed to start my, my update by disclosing why I'm wearing a T-shirt to a school board meeting. I've never done that before. This is the first day of summer school, and all of our staff are wearing the hashtag in this together. And of course, it says "staff" on the back, so that was, that was fun today. So a number of us today had these T-shirts on, so I thought I should explain why I'm wearing a T-shirt. It'll be my first, probably my last time I'm able to do that. But summer school did kick off today. It went well. Approximately 75% of the students that signed up showed up, so we knew that we'd have fewer kids that would actually show up today. But it went well. We got on the most, the majority of the kids rode the bus. So we will monitor daily, you know, the issues that come up and communicate them appropriately.
Do any board members have any questions for Craig with respect to the Superintendent's Report?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, good.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Craig. So we're now going to move into the consent agenda. That includes the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020 special school board meeting, the approval of the schedule of monthly bills, and the employment recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Judy to approve.
Do I have a... All right, I have a motion by Judy. I have a second by Trish. I will have Heidi call the roll because of the monthly bills.
Mr. Pope? Mr. Pope? Gee?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Couldn't hear you for a minute. We got it. Thanks. Ms. Fang? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker? Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving into item seven, Business Services. And the first item, A, is Monthly Financial Statements.
It's informational, right?
Informational.
Am I showing up?
Um, you're just...
I'm a little bit weaker here.
Yeah. Yep, you showed up, Mike.
See, monthly finance...
Hello.
The monthly financial statements are through May 31st, highlighting major revenues and expenditures. There's a balance sheet report and also comparative expenditures by major objects. Again, through May 31st. We are in process right now of closing out June and also closing the fiscal year. So that's what we've been working on. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions of Mike? All right, thank you very much. We'll move into item B, which is the Financial Summary Referendum Progress Report.
Good evening. I'll pick up this report and share it on the screen with you. We've got the two reports that you're used to seeing by now, Table A, which presents quite a bit of information of the facility, second column being the projected budget, the budgets, bids that have been approved by the board in the next two columns.
Tom, I can't see anything except your face, although that's pretty nice, but I can't see what you're...
Well, let's see. Let's try that again. I hit the shared content. Oh, I see what I did. Never mind. My bad. Share files.
Did your A have anything in there? Does your A have anything in there?
A, A.
Take a wave.
Uh, no.
Is that a screenshot? I can't do it in here. I have to find the original.
There we go. You got it.
Okay, so...
Except that's not the one I want.
It's not Table A.
See that?
There we go.
Perfect.
Yeah, Table A?
Yep.
Okay. Table A has the facilities in the first column, the projected budget, which has remained, of course, a constant so far. These next two columns here are the bid packages that have been approved by the board so far. Does not include the ones that we are, we'll talk about this evening. This column contains various change orders, furniture fixtures, and equipment and other items. And then this is a total column of the previous numbers. Then we have total committed to date, total remaining balance, and total paid to date. Paid to date... Paid to date is twenty-five million, five, forty-eight, six, ninety. As we go to table B, you'll see the same amount, twenty-five million, five, forty-eight, six, ninety. This table is, uh, presented in a different format. Uh, and, uh, it allows us in the business office to check one another and look to make sure that, uh, we don't have any errors. And if we do have a discrepancy, we can figure it out. Of course, the referendum totals are the same. This shows our contracts to date that have been approved and the balance at least to the number of it. Uh, the total paid to date, of course, is the, is the same. So you'll see, uh, this example, like the balance, twenty-nine, three, seven, nine. You'll see that that occurs right up here, twenty-nine, three, seven, nine, right there at the bottom. So, uh, we're moving along quite well. Uh, the projects are coming along nicely and, uh, uh, tonight we're gonna be looking at, working at two more budgets, uh, to get those two projects started. And, uh, uh, looking forward to, um, getting, uh, even more things, uh, in the mix here. Yeah, are there any questions?
Any questions for Tom about the report?
This is just information only.
All right, thanks, Tom. We'll move, we'll move then into the bids, so you can stay with us, okay? So the first item will be item C, which is the Madison Elementary bid.
Okay, is that, should be sharing on the screen?
That'd be great.
Yes.
Okay, I'll enlarge it a little bit then. Uh, we have a various number of, uh, bid packages here. As we go through these, uh, this is, uh, earthwork and site utilities. Uh, we'll have a header at each one of these, uh, areas. Each one of the scopes, work scopes, and then the first item in yellow is the, the low bidder. Uh, I put them in ascending order of the bids. So the earthwork by Bolt and then American Asphalt, and as we go through, I'm not gonna read them all off. You can see them in your own notes. But as it continues on to the second page, uh, you'll see various things, the energy control and, uh, electrical, et cetera. And the total of, uh, all of these, uh, low bid amounts comes to six, uh, million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Uh, furniture fixtures and equipment allocated for this project is two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. So the budget for the whole Madison project's is seven-point-four million. Uh, after subtracting the low bid total and the F E, FFNE, uh, amounts from the bid, this budget, uh, bid came in, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, uh, below budget. So we're under budget on this project according to bids, so that was a positive thing. Uh, so we're asking for a recommendation to, uh, approve the Madison Elementary bid, bids, uh, at six million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars.
Ninety-eight dollars.
Do I have a mo- Barb, uh, made the motion, do I have a second?
What, I didn't hear the motion.
The motion is to approve the Madison Elementary bids as highlighted in yellow for an overall total of six million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars.
I ask a question?
Yes, um, if we can, we gotta get the motion on the floor first, Gee.
Okay. Now, Mike, Mike can all second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Barb, a second by Mike, discussion. So Gee, go ahead.
Uh, I, uh, Tom, I saw some of these low bids are quite a bit lower than some of the other bids. Are you happy that the, uh, low bidders are, uh, competent companies?
We are, we are given that reassurance from our, our consultants that work with these companies on a regular basis.
Are you cut out on me? I didn't hear it.
I said, uh, we are assured of that through our, uh, through Nexus, our consultants who work with these companies on a regular basis.
And they've given them the okay?
No.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Tom or any other questions or comments with respect to the Madison Elementary bids?
Um, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Um, you know that chart that, uh, we had been getting pre-COVID that had the, uh, when items were, uh, sorry, when projects were started and, and bid and so forth? Um, I'm just wondering if somebody has that, if they could flesh that up, but if not, maybe someone can email it out. Do you know what chart I'm talking about?
You're talking about the timeline?
Yeah, yeah. It's really helpful to see that.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just email it out to us, um, tomorrow.
We'll dig that out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other-
Say, Tom, that, that question, uh, brought another one up in my mind. Uh, when, if we haven't started this yet, when do you think it'll be done? Will it be done in time for school in fall?
The things we're approving tonight?
Yes.
No, no, they'll start on some of it, but it won't be done by fall, no, next year, by next fall. Uh, we're, for example, we're working on Kennedy. We've been working through the summer on that. Uh, the inside work, we should be ready for fall. But the new addition, it won't be ready for probably a month or two, maybe into sc- into the school year. So that's coming along. Now, the work that we've done at, um, PJ Jacobs, uh, we phased it into two different years. The first phase will be done in time for the start of school. The second phase next summer will likewise take place that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments with respect to the Madison Elementary bids? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed with nay? The motion is passed. We'll move next into the item D, which is the Jefferson Elementary bid.
Hey. Jefferson bid, I'll enlarge that there, okay? Same format, uh, we have the different work scopes, earthwork and then paving, general construction, et cetera. Like the other one, um, these are, uh, good contractors who we've worked with most of these already anyway, uh, on all the other projects. First line in the work scope is the low bid. Uh, everything is based on this base bid column. Uh, and, uh, to go right into the second page, uh, where we're then, we're looking at HVAC work, electrical, uh, structured cabling for the technology, and, uh, et cetera. On this bid sheet, we're looking at, uh, the low bid totaling two-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, four-eighty-five. It's also in the text down below here. These items that I'm circling around right now are other costs that are budget amounts. Uh, we haven't bid the roof yet, and there are some other, uh, furniture fixtures and equipment items in here. Now, altogether, um, that comes up to three-point-one, almost quite three-point-two million. If you take the low bid plus these other costs, furniture fixtures and equipment, you'll come up with, uh, uh, three-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-six-seven-two-four, which is eighty-nine thousand dollars over the budget of three-million-ninety-seven-one-fourty. But it came in pretty close. That's a fraction, uh, fractional amount of overage. So between these two buildings, uh, we're gonna net about a hundred-and-forty thousand under budget. So even though this is a little over budget, the other one was quite a bit under budget, this bid amount plus the previous one you just approved will net out, uh, with these two budgets combined to be about a hundred-and-forty thousand under budget. So we're comfortable with this. And, uh, we would recommend, uh, approval of the elementary biz, uh, shown to you tonight in yellow, uh, at two-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, four-eighty-five.
Do I have a motion?
Ma'am, this is Trish, I'll make the motion to approve Jefferson Elementary at two-million-four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five. Highlighting in yellow where this is presented.
Trish has made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, I have a second by Chris, uh, with that. So is there any discussion or questions with respect to the Jefferson Elementary bids?
Uh, this is Gee, uh, the, I understand the motion for the two million something or other, I can't read the figures. What about the three million? Uh, is that a separate motion or, uh, how did that get?
The three million is a total that includes the two-point-four million in, in the bids, plus these additional items here, which are budgeted items, which have not yet been, uh, either bid or, or entered into an agreement to do. It's this, it's this two million you're approving, plus these odds and ends that bring you up to the three-point-one. It is not an additional three-point-one.
Right, so we have to move that in later time?
Uh, yeah, uh, for example, uh, uh, this roofing bid will come in a little bit later. That's three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, um, and it's not ready yet. Some of these other items aren't, aren't bid items, they're just, uh, uh, furniture fixtures and equipment and miscellaneous things. So I just wanted to disclose the full thing to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so what we're looking at with respect to, um, Jefferson is a projected overage of eighty-nine, five, eighty-four. But until we have these other extras and have finite on that, we won't know whether that's the number or whether we're looking at something else.
That, that is correct, 'cause these are still budgeted items and so we took this amount plus the remaining budgeted items, and that is what equaled the three-point-one million. Uh, so the eighty-nine is a projected overage. That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion with respect to this motion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Are there any opposed with nay? Motion passes. Thanks, Tom. So we will move into item nine, which is Educational Services, A, Student Academic Standards, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, excuse me, could I ask, ask what happened to item eight?
Um, there is nothing on Human Resources. That's just a stand, that's just a standing notation in Board Docs.
I thought I saw on the, uh, agenda that was posted that there were hirings and re- resignations.
Those were in the cons- that, yeah, we approved those in the consent agenda, Gee.
Okay, sorry, my fault.
No, those all come in with the consent agenda for the employment recommendations.
Okay.
All right, so I think we have Corey here to present about the Student Academic Standards.
So each year, um, and at about this time, um, this is an annual item that you see on the agenda. We are obligated to notify families of our academic standards for the upcoming year. So each year, um, after July one, the board has to make a motion, um, or take action on what our academic standards are. So again, we are recommending that we, uh, approve the Wisconsin Academic Standards, the Common Core State Standards, the Next Generation Science Standards, College and Career Readiness Standards, the National Core Art Standards, and the National Physical Education Standards as our, um, working documents for the upcoming year. There are no changes from last year, so it's identical to, to what we approved last year. Once those are approved, we will make sure that we get all families notified, which we do electronically on our website.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommended academic standards for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year?
This is Judy moved to approve.
Judy has moved to approve, do I have a second?
It's Trish, I'll second it.
Trish has seconded the motion. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? The standards are approved, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into item ten, Student Services. Item A is Nursing Services, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Good evening, uh, wish I would've been there joining you tonight. Um, we have a, um, a motion for us to look at, which is to appro- approve the district hiring of a nurse coordinator, a district nurse, and health office aides for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year in lieu of contracting with the Portage County Health and Human Services. Um, this continues to maintain our administrative code of, of addressing emergency nursing services within our school district. And I've put together a presentation to kind of go over what we, um, what we had. So I'm gonna share my screen.
Kayla, Kayla, uh, before you get into that, uh, i- if I may, the nursing service contract has, uh, been a topic of conversa- conversation each and every year that I've been here, starting with my very first year, um, whether or not, uh, it is in the school district's best interest uh, to continue contracting services with the county um, or taking on of the, the program, um, ourselves. And for a lot of reasons, it just continued to, to stay with the county and, um, and although we've been pleased, uh, with our partnership with the county, a couple of things changed this year, which we believe makes, uh, sense in terms of making the change. Uh, first of all, Kathy Reynolds retired. Um, and, and of course, she's been involved with our, with the nursing program for, for quite some time in the school district. Uh, the other is COVID-nineteen. In March, when COVID-nineteen hit, um, we worked with the county, um, to decrease the, the, the contract, which, which just made sense all around because we weren't utilizing the service. As a result of, uh, reducing the contract, the county laid off their nursing staff. So we just believed this was the time to move forward. The nurses have been, um, hired back by the county to do, uh, contact tracing as it relates, uh, to, to COVID-nineteen. So that said, I'm gonna turn it back to, uh, to Kayla. But, uh, for those that have been involved with the district for some quite time are, are aware that we've had the county nursing service or the co- county contract for a long time. And we're suggesting, uh, tonight that we look at a, a, a new model. Kayla, go ahead.
So I'm gonna attempt to share my screen with you. And I, got it. Um, all right, so here's what we're gonna go over. Uh, we're gonna review what the previous nursing contract looked like. Uh, I'm gonna talk about what we are proposing for our, our services moving forward. Um, I, we've identified some benefits of the change and then our hopeful next steps for you to consider tonight. Uh, previously, like Craig was saying, we contracted for, for as long as I, I've been told, really, uh, with Portage County Health and Human Services. Um, that's comprised of one lead nurse, uh, which has been Kathy Reynolds since I've come on. Um, there are seven other nurses led between the district providing services. It's, again, limited time at each of the sites, but they're there. Uh, we don't, uh, have a say of what nurses has come in, so we don't have control over hiring. And the duties and responsibilities have been really predetermined along the way. So when we need additional, um, trainings or, or, or services, it's, it's a little bit more challenging for us to get it, we have to seek it elsewhere. And so that's, you know, we've been very pleased with the overall services, but there's been some items that we would appreciate with some training aspects, um, that we weren't able to get through the nursing services as, as written into the contract that we've done. So our proposed plan is to hire a nursing coordinator to oversee the district health plan to collaborate with cabinet and leadership on, on looking at our health offices, helping with our health, our higher students and our health plans, also to coordinate trainings, um, to coordinate our health aides, to just kind of oversee the entire district, um, from a nursing aspect. in terms of emergency nursing services and still upholding our administrative code that we're required to do. We're also looking to hire a district nurse that's going to work directly with our nursing coordinator, helping with the training and health plan and provide direct nursing services throughout our district. And then in conjunction with that, we're looking to hire office health aides that support each of our building level health plans and supports the daily health concerns of our students and staff. And these are overseen by either our district nurse or the nursing coordinator as seen and as see fit. One of the cost benefits of the change is that our previous contract this last year with the county was $325,071. Our projected cost by our plan is $292,000 or 292,193,000 with a cost savings for projected of $32,878. In addition to just the cost savings and some of the money aspect, each of our elementary schools and CFC will have dedicated health aides to support our students. We've increased our hours at Ben and PJ's for nursing services. And we've also increased our district hours between nursing and health services by 91 hours a week to support our students and staff. What we're hoping for on this is the Board to consider what the nursing plan looks like as presented. And if so, we'd be able to post for the nursing coordinator, the district nurse, and also the office health aides for each of our elementary schools and CFC. Some of the other pieces of this one that, you know, just wanted to point out is that the increased hours are really as a coordination and support of our students and staff. The 91 hours is split between our buildings and it's really going to come down to some of that local control over the hiring and the trainings of our staff and nursing. So that is what I'm asking for tonight is to consider not resigning with Portage County Health and Human Services nursing contract, but instead taking on the responsibility for us and hiring our own nurses and health aides to support our district.
So before a motion on the floor, do board members have any questions of Caleb or Craig?
I do, Barb.
Chris?
Caleb, do the health aides and office aides, do they also get training?
Yeah, the nurses, the nursing coordinator and the district nurse would be doing the trainings to support the health. And that's really, they do that now. Our district nurses are through Portage County train, our health aides that we do have scheduled, also our head secretaries and our EAs, anybody that is working with a health plan or working within those health rooms get trained. The district nurse and nurse coordinator would facilitate those trainings and continue that work.
And where would that training occur?
It would occur in the buildings.
In any of the buildings?
Training every year, we go through that every year when we get our enrollments. We determine what students need, what health concerns that are out there, and we provide and coordinate. And that's something I do with Kathy and the nursing staff every year. I'd be doing the same thing with these two individuals and the health aides as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, Caleb.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
This is G.
I think Judy had a question, so we'll take Judy first and then G. Go ahead, Judy.
Oh, I didn't have a question, sorry.
Oh, Anne, I'm sorry. Sorry, it's really hard, your faces aren't on the screen, so all I can hear are voices. So Anne, go ahead.
So with these new positions, if approved, would they be required to do other trainings that may not necessarily be directly involved with health or nursing, such as say there was different things that created for professional development days? And it would be, it would be something that would incorporate things that all staff would learn, could learn from? Would they be required to go to these kind of trainings? My caution, it is in regards to, we want to make sure that if we are going to be using nurses strictly for within the school district, I want to make sure that students, colored black students are going to be heard and that if there are anything going on with them, that they are being taken seriously and not just say, hey, take a pill and go back to class.
Yeah, so they would be incorporated with our, any district training or staff training that encompasses inclusive or diversity training, they would be working with us just like in a leadership role or any staff role really. They'd also be trained in CPI, so de-escalation of students, we'd be putting them, asking them to be a part of that so that their SEL training for social emotional of our students, I would request that they're trained in our de-escalation and if, you know, worst case scenario, restraint procedures. But any type of equity work moving forward, they would also be asked to take part in those.
Thank you.
G, I think you had a question and then Barb?
Okay. What is the availability of at least a health aide at each building in our district? Will they be there all day, every day?
We're projecting 15 hours a week at the start of this, depending upon the students enrolled and the needs of those buildings. We can adjust as necessary to meet the needs of each of those individual buildings and students.
With the savings of $32,000, you know, it's just me, but I don't think with the advent of COVID, I don't really, I guess what I'm asking, with that $32,000, could we get more time at each school?
There is a possibility of that. I think it's going to depend right now on how much, what the needs are. And if there is a need for increased time, I would absolutely support that as well. And these are just rough estimated costs right now, but that's where we're at. G, that would be an absolute consideration.
Keep in mind, each year when we build a budget, we analyze everything within that budget. We are currently having a deficit and when we are in a position to change programming and as a result, there's cost savings. And I understand with COVID, that's going to change a lot of things for next year as it relates to cost. But we also have a budget to look at and if we have an opportunity to increase flexibility of services in an area and save some money, that's always the bottom line, helps out our deficit. That said, this is a whole different time. We're not making this change because of COVID. I shouldn't say that, to some extent we are because of the timing and the loss of the contract. Not that we can't go create a new contract because we can, but we know that our needs in the area of student services in general are going to be increased for next year. So there's also going to be a need to come up with resources in a lot of different areas as well as it relates to student services.
One question?
Do you have any questions? Any further questions, G?
I want to hear what Barb's got to say.
Okay, Barb?
If I can get my dog to shut up long enough. It feels to me like we're not going to have as much expertise. Are we going from eight RNs to two RNs and an unspecified number of health aides?
Yes, so we are taking the, we are going from the eight RNs down to two full-time RNs in our district. And then we would have individual health aides at each of our elementary schools as well. So yes, in response to that. The current RNs that we have, Barb, right now are, they're a limited amount of times per week. They're projected six and a half hours between five to seven hours per week in each of our elementary schools and anywhere between 15 to 16 hours in our middle schools. So they're there, very limited amount of time per week. And then we have health aides that support those buildings when they're not around as well. So they're not there every day even at that. They're a limited amount of time. And so the two contracted nurses would be available to the different buildings throughout the week on call needed or on a call basis.
So about how many of the health aides are we planning to hire?
Well, nine health aides for each of our elementary schools and then one for students. 15 hours a week, so part-time, yes.
Well, they will be part-time, so no benefits?
Yes.
Okay. And where will the two RNs be located?
One of them will be housed at Spash and then the other one will be housed between Ben Franklin and PJ Jacobs would be their home bases. And then they would be sent out to the elementary schools, pods in CFC as needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The one thing that concerns me is that with COVID, that if something, God forbid, happens at a school where a student or an adult has COVID symptoms, and of course, our protocol is to isolate and notify and all those things, that we have somebody like a school secretary or something that is basically in charge of dealing with that and they're not trained to do that. So I understand there's a budget. We can't have a school nurse or health aide at each school all day long. What I, in lieu of that, I would ask that whoever is the person of contact that would deal with that case be undergoing training with the nurse coordinator to make sure that we can at least say this person has been trained.
You're absolutely right. And we are doing that even currently through summer school where we've gotten protocols established and are, you know, we are getting in collaboration with nursing to coordinate and train those individuals so that they do understand what is the procedures and how to properly address the COVID concerns in our health isolation rooms that we currently have as well as training additional staff members. So we are dedicating health aides, but we do train all of our office staff in the health room procedures as well as the health plans and anybody else that comes into contact with individuals who have health concerns and especially with COVID here, making sure that staff are trained, especially in the health area, how to properly address the COVID concerns as they come in. And that's through all the procedures that we have put into place in our safety protocols for our health isolation rooms and as well as our health rooms.
They're being trained in summer school and they will be trained before school starts next fall?
Caleb, I think that's a really good point. Right now, we have nurses in our elementary schools that are there part-time. However, during the hours that they're not there, our secretary or office EA is taking over those responsibilities. So we have to make sure that that office staff is aware of all of the health room procedures that need to take place when the nurse isn't present. And we'll continue that and we'll continue that with COVID-related issues as well.
And that doesn't, that wouldn't change whether we're with the county, with the county contractor, whether we contract our own nurses. That procedure, those trainings would have to occur because we won't have a nurse in every building all day long to address the COVID concerns or health concerns.
Caleb, can I ask a question here?
Go ahead, Trish.
Okay, so first of all, I want to say, you know, it's so easy in government positions to say, this is the way we've always done it, we're just keep doing it the same way. So first of all, I want to say thank you for coming up with a new model for us. I think that you brought up a couple of different concerns, which I appreciate, is it sounds like we're going from, and correct me if I'm wrong, six and a half hours a week, which is not very much of having an RN in each elementary school, we're more than doubling that to 15 hours a week of a health aide. Did I get that right? Is that accurate?
Yep, so we are dedicating 15 hours a week of a health aide in each of our elementary schools where prior, previously this last year, we had an average of about $6 a week of an RN in our elementary schools.
And I guess the other thing that I like is that this is going to be one of our employees and so therefore they get the training we want and have the focus that we want. But I just have a couple of questions. Is a health aide, and I put that in quotations, a health aide, is a health aide a certified or licensed physician? What's the training that's required to become a health aide? Is it like a CNA, for example?
No, it will be, it will be a dedicated health aide position for trainings with the nurses. It'd be wonderful if we could have individuals that come on with certification, but it won't be a special certification for that. The goal would be to bring on individuals that are willing to get the training from our nurses for that.
The training that a health aide gets is just whatever our two nurses or red two nurses, what they offer? That this isn't like a licensed or certified nanny?
Right.
Go ahead, Barb, sorry.
This is that, yes. So right now, they don't have to have any certifications. We will train them in CPR and AED, safety, first aid. That will be part of their routine training. We will prefer that they have some sort of certification such as a nursing assistant or in some sort of health-related field. So that would be a preferred qualification as we post these positions.
Okay, well, my next question's probably more for you. Do we have a pay scale for them?
We do.
Where are they falling?
Yes, so currently, we have the office EA position, which supports the health rooms at this time. So there were a few changes that we made on that job description. So the salary range for that position, which currently exists, is $1495 to $1874. For the district nurse position, based on market, we're looking at 47,570 to 53,484. And then the nurse coordinator would be a 12-month administrative position and that salary band is at 86,440 to 106,705.
Nursing personnel, who do they report to and what are the qualifications for that position?
So they would report to, Caleb, the director of Snack Johnson. Hopefully, you did receive the job description. And I can tell you, for the nurse coordinator, the requirements are a Bachelor of Science in Nursing or school nurse as defined by the Wisconsin State Statute and a current Wisconsin Board of Nursing license. Again, we would expect that they would be certified in AED, first aid, and CPR, and then two years of direct nursing experience in a school or public would be preferred.
Thank you. My last question is, Caleb, as you were researching this, what do the other schools of our size in our area, you know, WASSO or PC Everest, what is their model for providing health services in elementary schools?
They're all, they all have hired nurses and then health aides as well. It varies for how many nurses that they have hired with, depending upon the enrollment in districts. So it can be between, well, a nurse, up to four nurses, depending upon the size of enrollment and the needs of the district. But the districts around our areas and the ones that I've talked with really use the model of hiring nurses that then train health aides within each building to provide the health services.
Thank you.
This is consistent with every district I've worked in.
So we're not hiring people to be health aides that are performing other duties in the office. They're going to be health aides, right? Can be distributed between the schools?
Yes, so the job description that we currently have is for an office EA and they also have had health room responsibilities. So it's really the same job description. They may have to have some, they may have to serve as backup in the office if the other office EA is out and about. For the most part, they would be dedicated to that health room.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Caleb or Craig? I am then looking for a motion. I am then looking for a motion. And someone else is going to have to read it because mine got cut off the top of my computer.
Yeah, I'll do that. And as a matter of fact, I'll make the motion, move to approve the hiring of a nurse coordinator, district nurse, and office, uh, health aides for the 2020, 2021 school year in lieu of contracting with the Portage County Health and Human Services.
Second.
Motion by?
Jeff, do I have a second?
Chris seconded.
Second.
Judy, second?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jeff and a second by Judy. Any further discussion or questions with respect to the motion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed with nay? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We will move into item twelve, general. Nay is the first item, and that is a school reopening update.
Okay, this is, uh, an update. If you take a look at your agenda, you will see, um, there are some links. The first is our instructional model of transitional classroom, blended learning and E, and E-learning. That was discussed, uh, and approved last month by the board. We still continue as a cabinet to have a tremendous amount of discussion on what September's going to look like. I get asked so many times, um, um, whether or not we're going to go back to school, um, from friends, from relatives, from colleagues. The answer to that is yes, we have a reopening plan. Of course, the next question, um, as it relates to the three options that we have, you know, what are we going to do? And when are we going to know? Well, we'll know when the time comes. Right now, it's, uh, mid-July, we're seeing a spike in our cases, um, likely a result of, uh, I'm not the expert, however, likely a result of what we, we saw over the Fourth of July. So I, I expect our cases throughout the county and state to continue to increase. I'm hoping, uh, it plateaus and, and, and starts then to decrease. Our plan and our, our goal within the plan is to get our, our children back in school. And it'll be, um, a decision that gets made at the appropriate time, um, whether or not we will be in a blended model or an E-learning model, um, and we'll discuss that, uh, as a cabinet. Twice a week, we meet Tuesdays and Thursday. You'll likely see continued tweaks to the plan. If there's anything of substance, we certainly will be bringing that forward, um, to the board as it relates to, um, any possible changes. The issue of masks, um, continue to be the, the topic of conversation. I can say this, which is really interesting. I was out and about in Point over the weekend, uh, at Lowe's, for example, and, uh, probably shouldn't name, um, specific businesses, uh, but was pleased to see the number of people wearing masks has increased significantly out in the public. Um, and, and I can't, uh, I, I'm sure that ties into the, the increased positive tests and, of course, the, the increased media, um, media presence. Currently in summer school, my, uh, just as we are in Bliss, if, uh, teachers are, are wearing masks unless they're in a situation where they, uh, can comfortably say there's, there's social distance being practiced. For example, I believe Cory, uh, told me a story today, she was in one of the classrooms, and the teacher had a, a shield on like Meg has and, uh, was, um, instructing and, and at one particular point in time, read to the students. So at that time, she took her mask off, and of course, she was well with, well past the six feet. She read the book so the people in the back of the room could clearly hear it, but, but that shield back on. So you're going to see, um, you're going to see masks and shields, quite frankly, uh, coming on and off. You, you may have noticed me tonight, you know, like, I've got to drink a, a little bit of water, your mask has to come off. Uh, people are going to be eating, your mask has to come off, so. Uh, the million-dollar question is whether or not we're going to require students to wear masks. And, and quite frankly, I'm going to buy time on that. There was a meeting today at Portage County, uh, must have been a committee meeting, um, to discuss whether or not the county will consider requiring masks countywide. Dane County started, I believe, today. Interesting, the, uh, city of, uh, Shorewood in Milwaukee today started requiring, um, everyone to wear masks indoors, so. There'll be conversation yet, um, as it relates to that. The other two issues that are, uh, links we have, uh, Sarah, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
The, um, the flow charts, um, if you and Beth would go over those please?
Yeah, sure. Beth is probably, uh, the better person to kind of walk through it. I just did the design. Uh, let me pull them up really quickly. Our goal was really to be able to visually represent kind of at what step folks were responsible for what, um, and specifically how that related to staff, um, what they might be responsible for, and then how that related to students. Um, so our expectations from parents and students and staff as well, and I, I think I would speak for all of us, when I think what, what is most important is that if anyone is feeling any of those symptoms, that they do not come to the building, um, whether that's Bliss or their school or school bus. Um, we really want to make sure that folks are healthy, um, when they are, are at our facilities. Beth, do you feel comfortable walking through those steps?
You're going to put it up on the screen so that it's handy?
Yeah, I can do that.
It's pretty detailed. And, and I would just add to, uh, to Sarah's comments that we also want to continuously remind employees that they, if they've been tested for COVID-19, they really need to remain at home until they receive those results. I think even, even people who have had close contact feel like, okay, I've taken the test, I don't have any symptoms, I can come to work. So we, we need to reiterate that with employees, uh, please not come to work if they're waiting for test results, or if they know that they've been in close contact with someone who's tested positive. The, the flow charts, uh, again, are very detailed, and it just provides a step-by-step for supervisors and employees, um, if they're feeling ill at work, which, what is this? Is the, yeah, this is the employee feels ill at work, um, obviously, they, they need to notify the supervisor. I'm going to, I'm going to. Sorry. Um, yes, so they, they, if they're at home, obviously, don't come to work. If they're at work, they need to inform their supervisor, um, and then the supervisor, principal designate, um, will question the employee about the COVID-19 symptoms, and depending on whether or not the employee is experiencing those, um, they, they have a route to follow here, um, staying, staying home. Obviously, we wouldn't recommend that they get tested if they're experiencing symptoms. Ask that they notify Human Resources so that we can contact the employee, also question the employee about symptoms, and discuss how they will be paid during the time that they're, uh, self-quarantining. So from there, depending on whether or not they test positive or negative, or they're waiting for test results, um, you can see how it flows. Again, remaining at home after, um, under all those scenarios, and that if it's positive, they have to wait ten days since their, um, symptoms first started and not have a fever for seventy-two hours. Anyone who, uh, has tested positive, uh, will be required to produce a release from the county health department. That way, we know that they've been in close contact with the health department, um, and, we know it's safe when they're able to return to work. We will be communicating with any, uh, any building, um, staff where an individual has tested positive for COVID-19. Only those employees who were deemed close contact, meaning within six feet for fifteen minutes or more of that individual who tested positive, they will be contacted directly by the Portage County Health Department and most likely myself as well, um, so that we can talk about next steps for them. Any questions?
Uh, Beth, uh, I've had a couple of people ask me about this, and they said they tried to find it on our website. I don't know if it's, they're having a problem, I mean, is this front and center on our website?
Yeah, it, uh, they, they do have to click a couple of times for this information right now. Um, it's under hashtag in this together, COVID closure information, staff communication.
That's on the front page?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this information was sent to every, um, employee of the district, as well as every, uh, family member of the district that was currently enrolled, um, for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. So folks did receive this in their inbox, um, last week, Friday.
And then the video that we, uh, participated in today will also be, I'm not sure when that's set to go out, but that also highlights, you know, the important protocols.
Yes, Barb?
Can you tell, can you tell us how the payment will go if they're quarantining? Does workers' compensation fall in for this area?
Not, it, it's going to be interesting, um, to see how the workers' compensation piece, uh, plays out if somebody believes that they were, um, within close contact with somebody that tested positive at work. Right now, uh, everything that I'm reading is, it's, it's kind of difficult to prove that that's how they may have contracted, um, COVID-19, so, um, initially, we're telling it, it's, it's highly likely that workers' comp would not cover it unless we can truly connect the, um, the, the positive individual to somebody at work. So right now, most employees, if they haven't used their FFCRA leave, um, they would be entitled to two weeks of leave during their time of quarantine or illness, um, at, at full pay. If they should run out of that leave for whatever reason, they certainly could use their, their sick leave balances or any other accrued leave that they would have. And then, you know, hopefully, we won't get into a situation where somebody doesn't have, uh, any leave at all, uh, and we're just going to have to take that on an individual basis at this point, um, and probably be discussing that within the cabinet level if we get into a situation where people have run out of their FFCRA leave.
Say, Beth?
Yeah.
What, is there a limit to the number of days they can, uh, take in one year? Because I know some people have two hundred and fifty.
Yes, there is no limit, um, to, to what they would take for their accrued leave. If somebody, you know, and, I, I hope this doesn't happen, but i- if an employee does end up in the hospital, that would then be considered a serious health condition, a, and family medical leave would apply to that. So whatever accrued leave they have, they certainly would be able to use. We provide two weeks of leave, um, for most classifications each year, and that can carry over if it's not, uh, been used up to a hundred and twenty days, I believe it is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, Beth, question for you.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the quarantine, um, if they're, um, close contacts here. In the event that this has been used, will the staff be, um, provided with a little bit more clarity? Because from what I understand from the DHS website is if you are in close contact, especially if you're living in the same home, that your fourteen days start after their ten-day isolation ends. So it's a ten days plus a fourteen days, um, in quarantine for close contact, if I'm correct.
You are correct, Ann. Uh, there is another flow chart, uh, that talks about close contact, and we have household contacts as well as non-household contacts. Sarah, I don't know if you can pull that one up, but that would provide the quarantining rules in that regard.
Because, um, so if I'm reading that correctly, this is employee close contact with confirmed COVID individual. So I'm looking at the second grade box, this is negative COVID-19, no test, waiting on results, and contact with an employee household, yes or no? So if we look at the, yes, it's quarantine for fourteen days after household individual's quarantine is complete. So if I'm reading that correctly, that's quarantine fourteen days after the individual who lives in that home who hasn't tested positive.
Yes.
Because, um, you, it is quarantine under there and not isolation, because anyone who was tested positive is considered to be in isolation, and whoever is close contact is under quarantine. Um, so I just want to clarify if that was the individual person who was tested positive or not? Because of the, yeah, quarantine more than that.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part, Ann.
Sorry. Because again, it reads quarantine for fourteen days after household individual's quarantine is complete. So when I read that, um, again, it means, so for example, I'll take, uh, me and my partner. So say my partner is the one... Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
So, so for example, my partner tested positive, and we live in the same home, um, and, and then his, um, he's considered, he, the, the terminology that is used by DHS is he needs to stay in isolation for the ten days. Once his ten days is up, then I must remain in quarantine for fourteen days after his isolation. But when I'm reading it, because it says household individual's quarantine is complete, um, so, again, because I, I'm stuck on the whole DHS verbiage of how
Yeah.
they identify, um, you know, whether you tested positive or negative for, um, COVID.
So we'll, we'll check that, Ann, but you're absolutely right. If someone tests positive within the household, they should be within isolation versus quarantine. So we will, we'll double-check that one on the verbiage there. But yes, it does, it does create a situation where somebody can be self-quaranting, quarantining for a long period of time, um, obviously, depending on how many, uh, individuals in the house test positive. So we, we may get into situations where, you know, people exhaust their, their paid leave, and, and we're going to have to address that if that's the case.
This, uh, this creates a, obviously, a substitute nightmare. Is there any indication from your DPI, maybe this is the thing, uh, about flexibility, you know, of, uh, having somebody playing in the classroom if a teacher's gone to quarantine? Have we heard anything?
Well, I mean, we still are under contract with Parallel, who provides us our subs. Um, they are working continuously to recruit subs, but we know it's going to be a challenge because, uh, you know, people, people are fearful, um, so that, that's definitely going to be a challenge, and I think that also plays into what models we maybe move in and out of, um, depending on our numbers.
Thank you. Capacity in every department, gee, is going to be an issue, and, and internally, we're talking about that. For example, uh, what's the capacity of our, our transportation? How many bus drivers could come, uh, test positive for COVID at the same time before our capacity will no longer, uh, allow us to transport kids? Food service, for example, if we get an, an outbreak in a specific school and have to shut down a kitchen, um, and then possibly, um, another kitchen, what's the capacity of our food service? That could require us to go into E-learning. And of course, uh, what's the capacity of our buildings? And every building's a little bit different, obviously, based on size. But what's the capacity of a specific building in terms of the number of staff that, that may, um, test positive for COVID, in terms of whether or not we can, um, keep that particular building open? So, um, substitutes just for, for teachers is just one issue. It's, um, for, for, for every department in the, in the school district. It's for, for, for every department in the, in the school district.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions about the reopening plan that was put out last week? Or last month? I don't want to take up all the monopolize the questions, but these have been asked of me by teachers and other people in the district. Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions about that?
I guess I'm trying to figure out, Gee, right now, if we can get through the presentation. So that, and then, then, because I think there are going to be other board members who also have questions and then maybe we can take those general questions at the end.
Yeah, I don't want to monopolize the questions.
Do any other people have questions with respect to the response protocol flow charts?
You know what, can I just make one comment? Wow, what a lot of work I did with those. Nice job. I, I think it's really helpful to have those stated in the flow chart. And, and I, I noticed someplace on the flow chart it says, you know, it's will be updated, you know, it will be changed. And I think that flexibility, we have to, we have to be flexible for all of us. But nice job on those and I believe there's probably a combination of people put those together. It looks like you really thought of these two, I just wanted to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, the other, before we go on to questions. Under school reopening is our summer school session guide that was put together, if there are any questions on that.
Do people have any questions on the summer school guide? Okay, so we can now open it up to general questions. Gee, you indicated you had a couple with respect to school reopening?
That's okay. I don't want to monopolize it.
Everyone, everyone will get the opportunity to ask as many questions as they would like. That's, that's why we're all here tonight.
First of all, with the seven through 12 plan, half the kids are going to be there Monday, Tuesday, the other half Thursday, Friday, are the teachers going to be there Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
They will, yes, they will. They'll also be there on Wednesday.
Okay, well, in the building?
Yes.
Okay, then is that fair to say then that class sizes will be about half of what they normally would be?
Yes, in the blend, in the blended model.
Yeah, then to me that, I had time to think about it. The, the K through six is really, and I understand all the problems inherent in dealing with younger kids and babysitting and things like that, but I don't see a lot of relief there for our K through six program for students or for teachers. And I know they're going to try to do their best to make class sizes smaller in all the ways that they can. But to me, it looks, I mean, seven through 12, I can see that there's, we've, there's some pretty good measures being taken to mitigate COVID, but I don't see a lot in, in the grade schools.
And we've had some comments regarding that, Gee. We continue to talk about that internally as well. We built the model on the assumption that, first of all, I do firmly believe that we need to get our kids back in school. And we are concerned about childcare and the inability of, of parents to come up with childcare for, for e-learning. That said, we're going to also, we know there's a number of families, students that don't feel comfortable coming to school. We're going to do more of an analysis on what that really looks like and how many we're talking about. And actually Cory and I, and this is kind of ahead of, ahead of a conversation because we haven't brought this forward yet to cabinet and we will tomorrow. Cory has some additional ideas as it relates to providing more e-learning for elementary students, for the parents that truly just would prefer that. We know that we have parents that are telling us that they will not be sending their, their children to school because they just don't feel comfortable. However, we also may have a number of parents that would prefer to have e-learning for their students. So we want to do an analysis of what that might look like because we may take a school, for example, in third grade, pick a, pick a school McKinley with three sections of third graders, for example. Having those teachers get together and determine out of the three teachers, who's going to, who's going to teach e-learning for a third of the class and who will be in-person for two-thirds of the class? And of course, I'm simplifying this by using, you know, rounded figures and whatnot. But those are conversations that will continue. I've heard a number of people through via email, concerns why we don't have an option for blended as it relates to elementary as well. So Cory, I know I probably just, I just took a shot at a conversation, brief conversation that Cory and I literally had this afternoon. You want to add to that, Cory?
Oh, unmute.
You're, got to unmute Cory.
Unmute, unmute.
You did a great job there. Basically, what we're trying to do is balance the childcare issue with also trying to accommodate parents who know right now that they are not going to send their child back no matter what. And then also trying to accommodate those families that really want their kids back in school. So we are continuing to, to problem solve the situation. We're modifying, we're adjusting, we're learning from others, we're communicating with a lot of different people. Like Sarah mentioned earlier, as, you know, the next few weeks come, we'll likely survey families again as well as staff to see where they're at and how they're feeling. And then provide as many options as we can while trying to keep everybody safe. So no decisions have been made. We'll continue to make sure that we're communicating with everybody and giving everyone all of the information that we have to make the best decision possible that they can for their family. So Craig, you hit it spot on. More to come in the coming weeks.
Earlier in the meeting, earlier in the meeting, I believe, who, somebody's not turned off. You are? Thank you. Earlier on in the meeting, I alluded to the fact that the, that this plan likely will be tweaked as we continue throughout the summer. And we'll bring that information, an update back to the board. And it might need board approval. If there's something of substance, which I would say that's something of substance, that's an actual amendment to the plan and we would bring that forward for the, for the board to consider. So there'll be more, more to come on that.
I also, I know.
Because I just don't see any relief for elementary school. It's tougher. I understand it's tougher. But I'm hoping, I know you're looking at it and I think it's a real problem, Mary.
I just, I, I want to know, and I've done it every meeting and I'm going to continue to do it. We are going to continue to have more questions than we have answers to. We are going to continue to have that for the rest of the summer. We are going to have that into the fall. We are going to have that until, and if we ever wind up with a vaccine that everybody can get. And that's just the reality. I just think it's so important for us to recognize how much work has already been done in the district since the board last met to approve the reopening plan. So everything that you're seeing tonight, so when Craig says we're going to be tweaking the plan, the reality is that administration is full-time, more than full-time, filling out this plan. They, they are, they are infilling all of the specifics, whether it be the flow charts, whether it be responses to parents about where they're coming from in terms of whether they want to send their kids back to school. We're, we're also seeing our state government and frankly, our federal government that's going to be infilling with our plan. We're going to see a significant portion of people from our community lose an additional $600 worth of unemployment benefits at the end of July with no additional potential resources in sight. We all know that that's going to create a lot of pressure for a lot of families within this community. So there's so many moving balls in the air with respect to COVID. And that's why the district plan is focused on safety, flexibility, and the best education possible under the circumstances. And I truly believe that none of us are going to know, we were going to know something totally different by the middle of August than we know right now. But the, but the, the reality core is that administration, cabinet, and staff continue to work tirelessly to try to create, to try to reach those overriding goals that we've set with respect to safety, flexibility, and the best educational, education possible. So we're all, I think, everyone, everyone's tired of COVID. I mean, all of us just want it to be gone and done and nerves are frayed. It's just, it's the reality, I believe, for all of us. And we have to recognize that and we have to allow administration to continue to move forward and best answer all of the questions that they're receiving and distill and organize all of the information that is coming forward for us. And that's what the board charged them to do in the course of our last board meeting and what they've gotten off to an incredibly huge running start in doing. So I guess I just, again, I keep, it's, we all want an answer. We all want here, this is it and now this is what it's going to be and it's not going to change. But, but COVID's not letting us do that. It hasn't let us do that since we first were told to close down our schools in February. I mean, and a lot of it's within our control, a lot of it, well, nothing's within our control with COVID. We're just trying to manage. But again, we need to recognize it's our district, it's our county, it's our state, it's our federal government and COVID circling around the big elephant in the room, controlling a lot of things. So I guess I just, I want us to recognize as we, as we look to the details, to also continue to acknowledge that larger picture of, of all the substantive work that's getting done here in our district day by day. We are light years ahead of so many school districts within the state.
We have, and then Barb, I'll get to your, your, your letter here. We have, we continue to receive calls from various school districts specifically to get our information from various states. I got a contact from a, from a colleague of mine this morning, and I'll leave out the school district, wanting to get our stuff as they're just starting the process. We've been working on this since March. So I feel for some of these districts that are just getting involved with this. Barb, if I may, you sent a, a letter to Heidi this afternoon. I have copies for the board that are in the room. And then I believe Heidi emailed to you, those that are on screen. Barb, go ahead.
Okay, well, I do have that document that I just wrote down my thought because I've been losing sleep over it. What I am proposing, and I know that we have approved that plan, but I think that our staff and our families, I think they need to know sooner than later what it's going to be like. So I am proposing that we go to just online for a period of time. We start online, then everybody can prepare themselves for that. We don't have to worry about the safety of those kids and our staff. I did a little research and I'm not going to read this whole thing to you because you guys can certainly read. I did a little research and in Wisconsin, about 2% of the people who get COVID die. And we have about 7,500 kids in our district, so that would mean we could lose 150 of them to COVID. We have 1,000 employees. That means we could lose 20 of them to COVID. And it's just not worth it to me. I have talked to a lot of teachers. They're scared to death. In that letter, I, I give several examples of messages, parts of messages that I've gotten from teachers about this very topic. If we were going to go face to face, I would say definitely with the masks. And I would fight that battle later, but right now, I really want us to consider, or you, the cabinet, to consider making the decision. Maybe it's for a month, maybe it's for a quarter, just so people can have the next five or six weeks to prepare for whatever the online thing is going to be. Now, it's going to be different for younger kids. You know, maybe the younger kids are going to have more fun, socially emotional kinds of things on, on Zoom with their teacher. I mean, there's lots of things that we can do, but I think, well, you see in front of you, I've got a lot of ideas on how we can use our staff. We do not want to get anyone sick. We do not want to lay off anybody. We have fabulous staff and we want to keep them. I think every person in this United States, in the world now, has to worry about their kid getting behind. Well, you really don't need to worry about that because everyone is in the same boat. You know, yes, we want them in the classroom, face to face. You know, we know all of those arguments. But I don't want to lose 20 staff members or 150 kids. And Portage County's been really lucky. We have no deaths. But we're still in Wisconsin and we don't know where those deaths are coming from.
Point, point of clarification, I think in all fairness to the conversation, Barb, and I don't want to get hung, hung up on statistics. There isn't a person that's listening to this that wants to see anyone die. But when, be careful with your numbers because at 150 students, you're assuming all 7,500 test positive for COVID. Just point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I, I guess I, no, I would like to respond to that because I fundamentally do disagree that everyone's going to be in the same boat. I believe the reality is that we have a significant portion of our community and of our families and students who are either single parents who have to work full-time or who are two parents who have to work full-time. And they have to work in jobs that require them to be present Monday through Friday full-time or shift work that presents even more unique situations. And there are households that have the capability of supporting not only a stay-at-home situation, but also a broader, more, more robust educational situation. That has been that way from time immemorial. And it is, COVID for me has, what has made very visible the inequity And it is, COVID for me has, what has made very visible the inequities that exist on many different levels in this community. And I feel very strongly that we need to recognize that as a school district, we have been the backbone of this community forever. And COVID has only made that more evident. We feed kids, we provide full-time childcare free for families for nine to 10 months of the year. We provide social, emotional support for kids in need of it, and we provide education. So it's just, it's, it's, you know, it's an agree to disagree. So for me, I do believe that, 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 that we as a board made a decision to provide administration with the opportunity to pursue the best learning models, taking into account safety, taking into account flexibility, and taking into account education. And I think it's essential that we as a board allow them to do so.
Well, you know, just like everyone else, I've had my mind changed because of the increasing numbers and because of, I'm listening to the staff. I'm listening to those parents who have said, I am not sending my kid back in that Petri dish. You know, we, I'm just telling you my opinion. You know, I know the research, I've read everything imaginable about this. I mean, I know. I trust our, our administration. But I also believe that while we might be the backbone of the community, we aren't in the business of daycare. Don't think we are.
The whole issue here in terms of isolation, social distancing, and quarantine, I think is, the practice of that is very different from one individual to one family. I know families, personal, within my own family, as well as friends of mine, that have not left their core as it relates to their, who they're in contact with. They haven't left their house yet, except for groceries, and now if they need to go back to work. I know those that are, are running around in, in, in the bars right now. So how people are reacting, this is very different. When you call, when you say a Petri dish, I think we've got to be careful here. I've been in the walkthroughs of our buildings, we started school today. I think there's a fair argument that our schools are much safer, is a much safer environment right now than what many of our children are in. We have groups of kids all over the place. They are not social distancing, they're playing basketball together. Literally, they're, they're on a court playing basketball. They're exchanging saliva and, and sweat on a basketball court. There are kids at the parks that are having games, there, there are families that are playing together. And of course, the whole issue of, of what that means to stay safe at home is very different from one family to the next. So depending on who you talk to, you're going to get a different response to this. I am hearing from families that are angry that we opened up summer school. We also heard from families that are angry that we have the, the safe protocols in place because it makes them feel like their kids are in boot camp right now. So we hear from the far left, and we hear from the far right, and then the politics get involved. At the end of the day, we've got to make a decision to get our children back to school as safest as we can. But Barb, I'll argue our schools right now are safer than many other places our kids are.
Well, I would certainly share G's concern about the elementary with all those kids as well.
Well, thank you for mentioning my name, Barb, because I had another comment, if that's okay. I think your option is the safest of all, and unfortunately, if the numbers go like they are, we're seeing that already in some states, Los Angeles, and California is shutting down schools. But I want to address all the letters we've gotten this last couple of weeks. The 800-pound gorilla in the room is masked. Now, I was at the Health County, the Portage County Health Committee meeting earlier today. I left because it was a disaster in my, from my eyes because social distancing was thrown by the wayside as people surged into the room. As the meeting started, people without masks surged into the room right by me, pushing me out of the way, and I, and social distancing went out the door. Half the people there had masks, half didn't. And it was already emotional before the meeting started. And I looked at that and I said, well, that's a preview. We'll see that if we decide to wear masks or not. To me, I'll tell you right now, I'm in favor of wearing masks because, because I want schools to be successful, because I want us back in school, because I want, don't want to see school stopped after a month. And to me, the best way to do that is to wear masks. I know people won't like it, some people won't, but I think they're a declining number in the face of the numbers that we see out there. We're going to have to address it sometime, and sometime soon, I'm afraid.
And G, you're referring to students specifically?
Yes, yes.
Everyone to include, students, yeah.
Yes, the, the legal opinion I got from Bob Butler at WASB that I sent to you and, and Meg, I misinterpreted the last paragraph. I thought he meant that it was, we had to consult the, the health officials, but we don't, it turns out. It says it'd be nice, be beneficial, but ultimately, in the end, it's, we, we do, according to his legalese, what I can make out is that we do have the ability. Whether we do it or not, you know, it's going to, as you said, Craig, the thing I tell everybody is, in, next week, it won't be the same, it'll be different. The week after that's going to be different. We have six weeks, and we're all crossing our fingers and our toes and everything hoping that no disaster hits. But for me, to the people who don't want to wear masks and then want their kids back in school, my only thing I can say is masks are the best way to get back in school and to stay in school.
So I think Trish had some, I think Trish has been waiting, so I'm going to take Trish first, and then I'll take, I think, was that Ann next? Go ahead, Trish.
Thank you. Hey, I appreciate everyone's comments, and I appreciate the hard work that the administration's done. So I, I like everyone else sent an email to administration today requesting that we have a special meeting sometime in the near future just to address some of these things. I will say with masks, the county, I mean, it's interesting that G was at that meeting. I would like to have gone to it as well. I do think that the county, I think, based on who's pushing this and how it's being pushed, I think the county's going to come, come out with a county-wide mask ordinance at the next meeting. And, but here's, here's my thing, we're not set up for, we're only set up for discussion tonight. We're not set up for making any decisions. But I, I do think that all of the science supports masks. And, and I guess the other piece that's really been speaking to me, kind of like Barb, I don't know if it's my neighborhood, it's filled with teachers, but I've had so many teachers tell me, if there's not a mask order, they, they really are afraid to come back to school. I actually had one teacher tell me, and she's, I think, 30, 30 years, 30, 27 years, long, long, long time. She said, there's not a mask order for everybody. She's, she's thinking about going early retirement because she's afraid. So I think our staff needs to know that we're working on this. And Craig, I agree with you. My guess is that with all the protocols that are put into place, our schools are going to be safe places. So much thought and attention has been put into so many details. But I think we need to address this mask, we're obviously not going to address it tonight. I'm going to ask if you at Cabinet would, you know, push this around. I, I did have a chance to look at the proposed ordinance that the Portage County Health Services Committee was looking at, what they're talking about moving forward tonight. And I, I, you know, we need to have, I, I think we need to have a mask policy that has reasonable exceptions to it, that our teachers can work with. But, but I think most of all, give everybody a sense of comfort that we're addressing this. Because right now, all of these emails that we've gotten, they're like, are you addressing this or not? And I think we need to send a vote of confidence that, yes, we are addressing it. This is what we're proposing. And I'm certainly not in the right position to make a proposal as to what that should look like. You, you are, the administration is, and the administration should bring something forward. You know, the other question that I had, and, and, and we need to do that for our families, but we really need to do that for our teachers because frankly, Barb was right, our teachers are scared. They're scared about themselves getting sick. You know, the other question that I have that I put in the emails today is extracurriculars. We haven't had any conversation about extracurriculars and sports specifically. I've had a couple of people send me emails about, they see the running clubs out, and they see the kids running, and, you know, I look at it and say, well, they're outside, it's safe. But the bottom line is, is that they have questions about what are extracurriculars going to look like? What are sports going to look like? What is it going to look like for our students? What's it going to look like for our staff? What's it going to look like for parents that want to come and watch these things? So I'm not saying, no answers tonight, I'm just saying these are topics that seem to be coming up to us, the board members, which are the base of the committee. And, you know, I think that our administration needs to come back with, with this. Any very well-known, maybe a special meeting that is later this month, just to start, not not start, but to continue giving answers and guidance. Because you've certainly given a lot of answers and guidance already. But, but this is, these are topics that I think that need to come up and need to be addressed. And I don't want to write the policy, I don't want to make a motion. I want you guys to figure out what is practical, what you can do, what you can't do, and so forth.
So co-curriculars were addressed in the plan, Trish, that we passed. And the, the, the information that came to the board at the last meeting, clearly WIAA is working through issues with respect to athletics. They will be providing guidance, as they've always done, and then we as a district will be taking a look, I mean, administration will be taking a look at that. With respect to the, the clubs, again, the, the broader conversation was that if schools were able to be open and able to be having face-to-face instruction, that there would be the option to be able to have those co-curricular activities happening utilizing the same safety protocols that we would be using within the classroom. So those were the broad parameters that were presented in that, the plan that was approved last month with respect to those co-curricular issues.
Trish, you said a lot there, and of course, it was recapping your email. Again, Cabinet meets twice, twice a week. We talk about masks twice a week. We are constantly talking about masks. And quite frankly, it's one of those decisions that doesn't have to be made right now. And oftentimes, time will allow the decision to be made by itself. I understand that we owe it to you as a board, and we owe it to our staff, our students, and our community for them to know what decisions are as it relates to masks. Since day one, that has been the most controversial issue of all, and it still continues to be. We will have clear guidance and, and direction as it relates to masks in an appropriate timeframe, if I may. The issue of, of sports, yeah, we, we addressed it to the extent that we can. As a, as a community, as a school district, we have to decide what we're going to do in Stevens Point. We have a meeting tomorrow with the DPI and the WIAA on this issue. That's how far behind this stuff is. The WIAA, they're, they're offering guidelines with, with no recommendations. At the end of the day, we're going to have to decide what, what Stevens Point is going to do for athletics. And it might be very different than what Marshville does and the rest of our conference. We just don't know. The other issue, we have to understand it likely, that likely is going to change. If we start in school, face to face, we may have athletics. What happens within three weeks if we're back to e-learning because of certain outbreaks at SPAS? Are we going to continue to play football? Probably not. People don't want to have that discussion. If we start, and this has got nothing to do with, with my interest of going person to person, believe me. If we start, however, if we start with the e-learning model, we won't be having athletics. You can't justify it. So there is so much that's going to happen in the next six weeks, really, really important stuff. And when you talk about not having discussion at this level about athletics, heck, we're meeting with the WIAA tomorrow, they don't know what's going on yet. Nobody, nobody wants to make these really difficult decisions because quite frankly, we're going to tick off half the people regardless of what we do. At the end, we're going to make the very best decisions that we can based on what's good for kids, what's good for staff, knowing that I'm going to upset a lot of people regardless of what decisions get made. For every person that I say, criticizes for considering opening up school, I get somebody that's angry that we, we pulled kids out of school in the first place. So making decisions without politics is going to be my goal.
Good luck with that, man.
All right, so Ann, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. So how does a district handle if there is either a citywide or a countywide mandate on the use of masks? Would we fall under that?
Depending how it's written. And you know what? More power to them if they're going to do it. I'll welcome that with open arms. City of Shorewood just did that. I'm not sure what Dane County did, but Shorewood, which is suburb, not suburban, it's, it's right next to Milwaukee proper, have a citywide requirement to wear masks indoors, including the school district, in the event they go back person to person. So it depends, I guess, what, what the county would put in their, in their requirement.
And, and I believe Dane County did pass, you know, required with respect to masks, but did not provide any sort of enforcement mechanism and indicated that that was not going to be a matter that law enforcement or government was going to be enforcing. Did you have any, another question, Ann?
No.
Does anybody else have any other questions with respect to school reopening?
We have another school board meeting in August, prior to school starting. In the event, we believe that there are enough significant issues that need to be communicated and/or acted on, we will then work with Meg to consider some type of special meeting, Trish. I mean, this is important stuff, obviously. The closer we're getting, the more worked up people are getting. We're also increasing in our positive COVID-19 tests as well. So we're just going to continue to take this day by day, week by week, and, and plan and communicate.
And the other thing, I just want to, the other thing I just want to note is summer school has required a significant amount of planning for everyone. And over the course of these next three weeks, will continue to require a lot of work and a lot of attention from administration and from all of those people that are, that are working. from administration and from all of those people that are, that are working to try to see if we can provide that for this short summer period. And we as a district clearly are going to be able to learn an awful lot of information, and probably have a lot more questions as we move through the day to day practicals of, of having kids in our buildings for the first time since February or March, I can't remember. All right, thank you. We will move into item B, which is equity and inclusion in our schools.
I keep taking my mask off when I, when I speak, and that's probably not what we're supposed to do, but that's what we're doing here, we're, we're trying this stuff out. We are within our six feet, but when I'm putting my glasses on, I'm fogging up, so I can't do both at the same time.
I was just going to ask you, mine are too, how do you, how do you deal with that?
I don't know.
Can I ask, before we get into that, the next topic is pretty interesting, could we just take a couple minutes?
Oh, a break?
Is that okay with everybody?
Sure, let's take five minutes, is that okay?
Thanks, G.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You going to go get a sandwich?
Get me one, too.
Get me one, too.
I already ate the first one, I'm going to get the second.